WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fentress County Commission. The Fentress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fentress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal Housing Leader Member FDIC.
Will we call this morning, this meeting, George, please? Will you please rise for the color presentation?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, dear Lord, we thank you for a beautiful day, Lord. Thank you for everyone that's come out tonight to see their county grow, Lord. And Lord, just pray that everything we do up here tonight, Lord, will be pleasing to you. Keep us safe on our way home, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Ms. Mary Williams Stevens couldn't be with us tonight. She is sick, so Ms. Amanda Hicks will call the roll, please.
Mickey McDonald?
Here.
Justin Miller?
Here.
Rod Williams?
Here.
Kim Davidson?
Here.
Benny Hughes?
Here.
Robert Cooper?
Here.
Lester Gooding?
Here.
Leon Stepp?
Here.
Larry Cooper?
Here.
Wade Matthews?
Here.
Has everyone checked the meetings? Got a chance to read over the meetings of the last months? If you have, may we have a motion to accept them?
So moved.
Mr. Rod Williams made the motion, second by Mr. Leon Stepp. Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
We have six notary applications, three new ones, and three renewals. The first one, Amanda M. Davidson, Jessica Criswell, Tara L. Martinez. Your three renewals are Tracy Todd, Randall Wright, and Regina Koger. Do we hear a motion on those?
I so moved. Accept it.
Mr. Leon Stepp made the motion, second by?
Second.
Mr. Rod Williams. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, likewise. Motion passes. Report on a debt obligation for Highway Department, Series 2018. Capital outlay note. This is required by the State of Tennessee Comptroller's Office. And what this is, is we're, they have applied for a placement loan in interest of 2.2% to purchase a new fuel system for the Highway Department and also for a tractor with, I believe it's a 22-foot mowing arm on it for mowing right of ways. Do I hear a motion on that?
So moved.
Mr. Lester Gooding made the motion, second by?
I'll second.
Mickey McDonald. Roll call vote, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Ten, four, none against. Motion passes. We have a resolution, 2019-03. And this for the transfer and reimbursement of interest earnings and capital projects to the Debt Service Fund for Past Debt Spenders, Fentress County Library. Tyler Armour, would you like to explain that, please?
It's money that has been sent into the Capital Projects Fund for some time. And as I got with audit, this is basically how they said to move it. Resolution passed by the county legislative body to move it into the Debt Service Fund to pay for previous debt reimbursement on the library.
So this is money that is actually going back into the debt service, correct? I need a motion of this effect, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to accept with a correction. That's 2019-02 instead of 03.
Correction's been noted. Lester Gooden made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, from Mr. Justin Miller. Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Motion passes. Item number 10, consideration of resolution established in Section 125 Cafeteria Plan for Fentress County Employees. The gentleman discussed this in the work session. Tyler, would you like to kindly explain what this is about before we take a vote on it?
A Section 125 Cafeteria Plan basically sets up the guidelines and allows the employer-
To let the employee pre-tax some of their elected benefits. In turn, that will save not only the individual money on a tax basis, but also the county.
Do we hear a motion for this?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Lester Gooden made the motion to accept. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second, by Robert Cooper. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey?
Against.
Justin?
Pass for the vote.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Eight, four, one pass, one again.
Does the pass want to change his vote? He still passes. Motion passes. Consideration to allow American Fire Delta Insurance Company to serve as Fentress County Government supplemental benefits and administrative service provider. Hear a motion on this?
So moved.
Benny Hughes, Commissioner, made the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lester Gooden. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey?
Against.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Nine, four, one again.
Motion passes. Item number 12, consideration of the following appointments to the Fentress County ID Board to fill vacant seats. First one is Brandon Wright. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Rod Williams made the motion, second by?
I'll second that.
Mr. Leon Stepp. Roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
The next appointment is for Mr. Joey Vaughn. Do I hear a motion for that?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Rod Williams, second by?
Second.
Commissioner Benny Hughes. Roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Motion passes. Both appointments pass. Item number 13, consideration of the following reappointments to the Fentress County Audit Committee. Ms. Julie Linder, for a term to expire 2023 February. Do I hear a motion?
I so moved. Accept it.
Commissioner Leon Stepp made the motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Robert Cooper, second the motion. Roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Motion passes. The second one is Mr. David Ramsey. His term would expire February 2023 also. Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Kim Davidson made the motion. Hear a second? Second by Mr. Rod Williams. Roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Appointment passes. Item number 14, consideration of the following reappointment to the Fentress County Planning Commission, Mr. Mike Wright. His term would expire February of 2023. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Commissioner Lester Gooden made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Justin Miller. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, likewise. Item number 15, this is a discussion in regards to the county designating a portion of the county property located off the Airport Road for the UT Extension Ag Pavilion Project, which they're trying to get underway. We did send a letter in November or December 1 back to them stating that the full commission was in support, was in support of this project. What they're wanting to do is get a grant to get the money to build a livestock pavilion there on the property. I believe it's about 150 by 50 or so. It's a good sized pavilion. It will be used for your 4H groups and clubs in the district and the region to have competition, to have sales, and several different things when it gets started. What they're needing is just to pinpoint 15 to 20 acres, if that's agreeable with the commission, so they can go on with their project and get their grant forms filed. Do we hear a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to accept it and approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooden.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wade Matthews.
Jimmy?
Discussion?
Yes. I think to, to help them further this grant, they needed a little more specific because we did this last time. We gave full support, the whole commission, but I think they needed in a little more specific terms that- And so I'd like to amend the motion, if I could, just a little.
You can. I mean, that's part of the procedure.
You certainly can.
Okay. So I'd like to amend the motion that we allot 20, up to 20 acres located on the ballpark road, valued at approximately $10,000 per acre for use to develop the UT Extension Ag Pavilion. So I think that just will help them just continue on with this grant. I think they need a little more specific, so.
I'll take her amendment.
The amendment was made by Commissioner Davidson to pinpoint that to 20 acres. And the amendment was seconded by Commissioner Hughes. All for the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, likewise. So the motion is now that the commission designates 20 acres for this project.
Up to 20.
Up to 20 acres.
I think if the project doesn't come in bigger or that big, then they only take what they actually, they won't take the 20 acres just outright. If it only takes 10 acres when the project comes in, 10 acres is all they're going to take. It's not, we're just giving them 20 acres. It's up to 20 acres.
And it just helps them again, knowing that they have 20 acres and they have a lot of value. It's just saying that Fentress County, we're not only committed to the project just in mindset. We, I think everybody at this table is wholeheartedly for it, but financially too, we're going to back them by donating that land. So again, y'all, we know the grant process. It always helps if you have some kind of financial backing to any grant that you go after. So that's just our commitment to the UT Extension and that pavilion, saying financially, we're going to commit this to you. So again, it's just us going into partnership and kind of putting that down on paper, that we are championing your cause and we're all for this pavilion.
Did roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Motion passes. Our next item, item number 16, is consideration of setting a date for the delinquent tax sales for the 2015 tax year. I believe they would like to see that come through on June the 21st for sales. Is that correct, Ms. Leslie?
That is correct, Jimmy. For sales, delinquent taxes that were due in 2015, we filed suit in 2017. That'll be an additional two-year window to pay those taxes, four years altogether. We'd like to have the sale of June 21st of 2019. For the 2015 tax year only, that will include if there are any previous balances, there are very few of those that are still outstanding for tax years 14 and previous. But if there are any delinquent taxes due for the 16-year or the 17-year, those dollar values will be included, but not necessarily being sold for those taxes due.
And this, of course, as usual, will be advertised five weeks prior to the sales, and notifications will be sent out in abundance, as usual.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the June 21st date for the land sale, tax sale.
Motion by Commissioner Gooding to accept the June 21st for the 2015 tax sales. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rod Williams. Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Ten, four, and zero against. Motion passes. Item number 17, consideration of extending the building lease, number 9687, with Department of Children's Services and Department of Human Services. This is the first lease amendment request and will be extended, extending the lease to March 31st, 2022. Ms. Leslie, would you like to say just something on that?
Hi, just briefly, Jimmy. I think maybe in January, we extended the lease through March to clear up some confusion in the prior lease. But this is our initial extension for the first time that they have had it. The lease expires in March, and they'd like to go three more years with us, and I believe it's at the same amount. Is that correct? We're not going to change the amount. They're paying.
Correct.
They're just going to stay in residence where they are over there and extend that lease for three more years.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to extend the lease.
Motion made by Commissioner Robert Cooper, and seconded by Commissioner Lester Gooden. Roll call vote, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Item number 18, consideration of approval of the revision of the Sheriff's Official Personnel Policy Number 3.017 to update employment requirements for corrections officers to allow the age of hire to change from age 21 to age 20. This is the policy of the Sheriff's Department. It didn't have to come to the commission, but just as a courtesy, he would like to have your input on this. And so do I need a motion for this?
So moved.
Commissioner Benny Hughes made the motion, second by?
Second.
Commissioner Mickey McDonald, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, likewise. Item number 19, consideration of the sole 36-month contract for the Fentress County Ambulance Service Building Software. Mike Aduff, would you care to address that, please?
This is hopefully the final step of this process of bringing the building back in house, we hope. We started this process back at the end of November, 1st of December, sent out bids, received bids. Last month, you guys accepted bids, but we're waiting on a contract to fully make this, to just go. You've got the contract there. You pack it. It's $1,060 a month. I think it'll give us a little bit more handle in-house of being able to handle our own affairs and actually allow us to hire another volunteer person to work here in the county as well. Just ask for your approval in getting on with this contract.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Commissioner Justin Miller made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second. Go ahead.
Commissioner McDonald made the second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Motion passes. Item number 20, consideration of a quote from Twin Lakes for security cameras to be installed at the South Fentress Park. There's been quite a bit of vandalism going on out there, and they're requesting, if we can at all, to install some lights. Mr. Robert Cooper, would you like to address that, please?
Well, we've been working with the committee out there since back in the fall, and they have had a lot of vandalism. And I think just last week, they had some more, and done quite a bit of damage. And we've got some quotes from two or three different places. The lowest quote is Twin Lakes, and we deal with them here at the courthouse. But that's, the quote there is for two DVRs to be, one located at their, at their office area and, and another location out there. So there'll be several different cameras placed around where the 911 center will be able to view these cameras once they're installed. Of course, in the school system, we've got all of ours linked to 911, and once these are installed, 911 can view these, and they will be viewing these, so hopefully it'll cut out a lot of vandalism and, and help those people out out there. But I think this is one of the best things that we can do to help them.
Hey, it's sad, but the hours that have been invested in that park and the money that the community out there has put into it, and then in one night, you've got people that come out there and do that much vandalism and destroy the property. Sad that we have to do this, but in turn, putting these cameras out there will ensure that we will pursue every avenue to make sure they're prosecuted if we find anybody out there vandalizing. So again, I hope that that's a deterrent, that people can find something better to occupy their time because we will be monitoring that property.
I make a motion that we accept their bid.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Gooding to accept the bid, second by Commissioner Leon Stepp. Is there any discussion?
I got a question here.
Several.
The, not to exceed $900, is that?
That's added to this bill.
So it could be $29.08?
It would be something like $29.08, somewhere. It could be just a few dollars less than that, depending on the labor. If it takes, you know, say, four or five extra hours, less extra hours, then the price will come down. But this is kind of a, just a normal quote, so.
Will there be a monthly bill on this?
There will not be a monthly bill. There will not.
Will it make premiums for insurance go down any? Not if I give you a little better rate?
It probably would. It should.
Where do you want the money to come from? We've got a couple, three options. We can either take it from fund balance, or we can take it from budgeted money that we've already budgeted, and if you, if anybody's got their budget booked.
Does that need to be a motion?
Well, I mean, we need to know where you want the money to come from, but then-
No, I just want to know, that needs to be included in the motion, or that's secondary?
Either way, it's however you want to do it, but in the Fentress County Commission budget, we actually budgeted it for $42,000 for contributions. We've not spent any of that yet. We could be asked to be spending some later on today, but we've not spent any of that money. That's budgeted money. It's going to come out of fund balance, so.
Has any of that money been promised already?
It has not.
None of it?
Well, it was, it was requested for an individual group, and we refused to give it to that group, and we put it in our budget, the commission's budget. So they do have the right to come and ask to use some of it, but they have not done that yet. Or we can take it out of fund balance. It's whatever you want to do.
Is there any money in the building?
County, county buildings is-
No, we don't have any.
I just make the motion that we go forward with this and we take it out of the budgeted money. We're already hitting the fund balance.
For donations?
So with the contribution line-
Contribution line, either.
That's going to be 51100-316. Just a quick question, too. Did the park themselves, where they rent spaces for the 127 sale, did they not have it in their funds to?
They don't.
That's just $2,000.
Yeah, but they, they're basically self-sustained.
Look at all options, you know.
And I mean, we've, we've met with those folks two or three different times, and, and I mean, they, they put in hundreds and hundreds of hours of their own personal time. And of course, Clark Range High School, ROTC out there is really good to help them with cleanup and stuff, but I mean, they, they, they're basically self-sustained, and they, go ahead, I'm sorry.
They had to spend money to clean up vandalism already out of that, Justin. They used, they did use the money out of the 127 yard sale to do some repairs and stuff, but it just, like I said, it just keeps, they repair it and somebody tears it up again. It's just never ending. Is there money somewhere to be donated to them this year, like usual?
Yes. The, we donate to Kirby Johnson and- Yes, the, uh, we donate to Kirby Johnson and, um, South Fentress Park.
And I'd like to add that this, uh, uh, Fentress Park, South Fentress Park, whatever it's called, is a county park, it's not just, uh, fourth district park, it's, it's a county, county-owned park.
We donate equally to the South Fentress Park plus the Kirby Johnson Ballpark, yes, it's in the budget.
And it's also utilized by other counties also, not just Fentress County or South Fentress people.
Hopefully they'll spend money when they come over here, and we'll get some touch on it. But when you have to, uh, refurbish a bathroom three times a year, cause somebody's went there and tore the sinks off, or kicked some oats in, and, uh, like, that, that, what money they make is soon spent. I call for the question.
Roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Motion passes. Item number twenty-one, consideration of quote for fifteen street light fixtures to be replaced with new fixtures at the community complex located at Colonial Circle, thirteen of the lights are on county poles and will be bought, and two lights are on V E C poles and will be leased for three years. Robert Cooper?
Uh, of course, anybody up in that neighborhood of a night, they know that those lights are basically all out, and what's there now, uh, is, uh, I think it's two-hundred-and-fifty watt metal halight, and what, what we're proposing to go back with is a seventy watt LED, and, uh, these lights, uh, with the purchase of one, uh, four-hundred watt metal halight, which will take the place of three other light, street lights are, but it's, it's in kind of a bad location, but it'd be on our pole, and that's, that's one of them there, and then twelve other LEDs, which like I said, is seventy watt, these lights should pay for themselves probably within two years or two and a half, about two years, and will also be leasing those two lights, which is in the backside of the ambulance service, and then, uh, the other one will service, uh, the lower parking lot for, uh, 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 human services and, uh, where the state troopers just got an office up there, and of course, those two lights, I think it's about twenty dollars a month for the ones we'll lease, and then, uh, thirty-six-hundred-and-forty-three dollars, forty-two cents for these lights, but with a LED and a twenty-year guarantee, I mean, hopefully we won't be having to service these lights every year or so like we did the old ones, so I mean, I strongly recommend that we go with this route, and, and V E C is gonna install these at no cost, so we're not paying any labor cost on them.
And you can assure that these will be dark sky compliant, correct?
Well, they're not gonna be as high as the ones we put in parking lots like at the, at the schools, and I mean, of course, those parking lots like Alar is lit up good, but these are seventy watt, but I can check on that to make sure, but I mean-
Cause we don't want to do anything to mess that up.
But now, these are totally covered on the top, I mean, all your light is, is directed straight down.
These, they should be, if you mention that, that we need to be the dark sky compliant, I'm sure they probably have already been dealing with that, so I think just making them aware, or-
Yeah.
We'd be being in the city, and I think the city has ordinance too, so we just wanna make sure we try to partner with them.
Hear a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Hughes made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Justin Miller, any further discussion?
Once again, where do you want the money to come from, that's unbudgeted money?
Probably fund balance on this.
We can do whatever you wanna do, just fund balance, okay?
I would prefer to take it out of the contribution line that we did for the cameras, while we've not-
And you said we, we've got how much in there?
Was it forty-two and a half?
Forty-two thousand, and we've not taken anything out of it yet.
Which again is five-one-one-zero-zero dash three-one-six.
Get all our money in.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Motion passes. Consideration of declaration of surplus property from the Fentress County Volunteer Rescue Squad. Mr. Joe McGrogan, would you like to address that, please, sir?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, in our last budget, you allotted us, uh, six thousand dollars to replace this vehicle, it's a nineteen ninety-six Jeep Cherokee that is no longer really serviceable to keep on the road, I mean, it's served us well for many, many years, and, and we did lot and, and replace it with the two thousand and eight Ford Edge, uh, that we have in service now, and we'd just like to go ahead and sell this and get it off the coast.
Do I hear a motion to this effect?
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Robert Cooper made the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Kim Davison made the second, any discussion?
Was, was, did the rescue squad purchase that vehicle, or was it purchased it through the county budget?
It was purchased by the rescue squad.
Okay.
It's entitled to the rescue squad.
Okay, alright.
We wanna make sure we cover all the bases, you gave us money to replace it, so we'll put this money back into, well, you allotted six thousand dollars for a replacement, we spent seventy-five hundred, there's no way we're gonna get fifteen hundred out of this old vehicle, but whatever's left, we'll put back in the county's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Just before I sit down, uh-
Yes, sir.
Your future consideration, we're also using a nineteen ninety-seven ambulance that was donated to us from the, uh, ambulance service like sixteen years ago, we use it for autopsy runs for the country, uh, next time you consider retiring, uh, an ambulance from the ambulance service, if you can look at donating that to us, we can retire this machine that's long overdue to be retired.
Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Thank you.
Consideration of the following budget amendments, children of, of the cumberland's in the amount of four thousand dollars, there was twelve thousand dollars the commission approved, and only eight thousand of it got into the budget, this is their correction, placing additional four thousand into the budget, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Justin Miller.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lester Gooden, any discussion?
In the budget process that we done, when they came and asked for the money, um, we'd been given eight thousand dollars for several years, and, um, their rent had went up to almost a thousand dollars a month, which would cost them twelve thousand dollars to stay at their current location, so in the budget process, the, the budget committee voted to put in the budget of twelve thousand dollars, that's where that figure came from, is to cover their rent at the current location that they're at. Somehow another eight thousand's what we gave them last year, and that's what went back in the budget, it should've been twelve thousand.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Motion passes. Senior Center, four hundred and ninety-one dollars in fundraising money to be placed into other supplies and materials line items, this is a normal budget amendment that comes through each month, do I hear a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooden, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDonald, roll call vote, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
The next one is miscellaneous in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars placed in, funding into the liability insurance claim line item. Do I hear a motion on this?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion was made by Commissioner Lester Gooding, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benny Hughes, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Against.
Wade?
Four.
Nine, four, one against.
The next one is ambulance service in the amount of two thousand dollars to cover the expense of new uni, employees' uniforms and office supplies, this is a line item move, is what this here is. Do I hear a motion?
I'll so move.
Commissioner Leon Step made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second was made by Commissioner Gooding, roll call vote, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Motion passes, the next item is election commission in the amount of two hundred and forty, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirteen cents, this was a refund from ADT Security after the election commission canceled ADT contract and shows Twin Lakes Security. Do I hear a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Davison. Roll call vote, please.